Cut off the drain.
I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of February 27, 2019 to order.
Do you pledge allegiance? Commissioner Blockdike.
Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blockdike.
Here.
Commissioner Eglon.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamill.
Here.
Chair Heady.
Here. Do I hear anything for reordering of the agenda?
No.
Okay, presentations, there are none. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 And I have to sustain, because I wasn't here, but for about 5 percent of it. Okay, they're approved. Okay, this is time for public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda may do so at this time. And I have some speaker slips, but they seem, there is one for parking and traffic.
That's in regards to the...
Okay, so that's, these are all on hotel. Okay, great. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearing, none. And it's a new public hearing.
Oops, I'm sorry, it is a new public hearing.
Now, do I have to do both of these at the same time, or do I do one and then continue on to the next?
You can read both for the purposes of...
Oh, boy.
Starting it out.
Okay, the first one is a resolution number 19-01, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Buellton, repealing and replacing Planning Commission Resolution Number 1807 in approval in addendum to the Oak Springs Village specific plan final environmental impact report for the development of the Cambria Hotel and Boutique Hotel project located in Accessor Parcel 13779001 and making findings therefore. And a resolution 1902, a resolution of the Planning Commission on the City of Buellton, repealing and replacing Planning Commission Resolution 1808 in approving a final development plan 18 FDP-02, tentative parcel map TPM 31062 for the Cambria Hotel and Boutique Hotel project located between McMurray Road and Valley Vineyard Circle, Accessor Parcel Number 13779001, and making findings as part thereof. Most things I've said at one time.
Good evening, Commissioner Heady, Commissioners. This is the, as Chair Heady mentioned, this is the public hearing for the Cambria Hotels and Suites and Boutique Hotel project. Just to give a little history, on December 20th, Planning Commission adopted Resolutions Number 1807 and 1808, which were to approve the addendum EIR to the Oak Springs Village specific plan and the approval of the Project Cambria Boutique Hotel, the Cambria Boutique Hotel project. However, in late December 2008, staff discovered that Vineyard Village Town Home owners were not properly notified of the 12:20 public hearing on the project. Therefore, staff is, was required to renotice and reopen a new public hearing for the project, which is the new resolution numbers we have to consider tonight. In addition to that, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to finalize Condition of Approval Number 87, which is regarding the use of the Meeting Room Building and outdoor event space. The project applicant is here in the audience tonight, Christopher Atkinson of SY Vineyard Resorts LLC. The project is a final development plan, which includes two hotels, 107 guest rooms each, Meeting Room Building, which is approximately 4,400 square feet, and an outdoor event space, outdoor restaurant seating, and a pool and spa for each hotel. Also included in the project is a tentative parcel map, which is, consists of subdividing the existing one lot into two separate lots for potential future separate ownership. The project is located within the Village Specific Plan, which is, if you look to the left of your screen there, that's the entire site. To the right of your screen shows the different components of the specific plan, including the hotel, which is located between McMurray Road and Valley Vineyard Circle. The zoning designation for this particular lot is general commercial specific plan. And specifically for the hotel site, the zoning designation is general commercial. I just wanted to show the site plan again. I know several of you have seen the project before. However, I just wanted to kind of go through just some of the main points to, as a refresher. So you have the, and I did not bring my pointer. But you have the Cambria Hotel on the left-hand side or north, which is 107 rooms, and the Boutique Hotel to the south or the right, which is also 107 rooms. There's a pool and a spa for each. And you, as you see the Meeting Room Building there in the center, which is essentially facing the adjacent uses, including the future senior housing project, the Valley, or Vineyard Village Town Homes, Crossroads Center, and the future Village Park. And as you can see, we've, around the perimeter is all of the parking that would support the hotel. I wanted to show the landscape plan to just show that there is extensive landscaping around the project and the event lawn and around the perimeter of the project. Some of this landscaping will be removed in order to accommodate the side perimeter sidewalk around Valley Vineyard Circle. And you can see this short, sort of gives you a better depiction of the event lawn, the Meeting Room Building in relation to the hotels, and the outdoor restaurant seating, which is immediately to the east of the Boutique Hotel. You can see the umbrellas there on the site plan, on the landscape plan. This is the tentative parcel map, which shows the existing lot being split into two separate lots for, separate, two separate lots for each hotel. You can see that the Meeting Room Building is part of Parcel B's, but it's proposed to be used by both hotels. And I just included the west elevations for each hotel, showing basically what's fronting McMurray Road. So this is the Cambria Hotel, and the maximum height for this is 63 feet. But that's, the top of Mansard's 50, so there's just the tower element that extends taller than that. And this is the west elevation, or the elevation facing McMurray Road for the Boutique Hotel, which reaches a maximum height of 57 feet tall, or 50 feet to the top of Mansard, with the extra seven for the tower projection. The specific plan does allow for up to 64 feet in height for either or both hotels, so the project is consistent with that standard as listed in the specific plan. This is the Meeting Room Building, which is proposed about 35 feet tall. And you can see the, it's sort of an open floor plan to give, with the intent to give maximum flexibility for different kinds of events. And I included this because this shows a rendering of sort of the Cambria Hotel in relation to the Meeting Room space and the adjacent outdoor event space that's going to be associated with the Meeting Room Building. So to get into more detailed discussion of the Meeting Room Building and outdoor event space, I just wanted to go through sort of the history of the Meeting Room Building and where we were and where we're going with it. So at the December 20th meeting, Planning Commission, as part of their adoption of the previous resolution, required staff to bring back at a later date, which is today, the purpose of tonight's meeting, revised conditions of, condition of approval number 87, again, which is related to the Meeting Room Building and outdoor event space. And they asked that, one of their requests was that we compare what we have conditioned other projects as part of our analysis, as well as work with the applicant to get a better understanding of the intent of the use of the Meeting Room Building and adjust the conditions accordingly. Attachment six to your staff report is, includes staff's recommended revised conditions of approval. And I've also provided you via email, you should have a copy with you, the applicant's proposed red line revisions to the, to attachment six. And I do have copies if you need more, or if you forgot yours. I do want to mention before I move on that I do have some, and you'll see in the upcoming slides, some adjustments to some of the conditions that are slightly different from what you see in your staff report, but I'll go through each of those in detail and provide an explanation. So the, as we discussed at the last meeting, as the Commission discussed at the last meeting regarding this project, the two main concerns are parking and noise as related to the use of both the outdoor event space and the Meeting Room Building. So again, adequate parking is required for all use, for, all uses per the Buellton Municipal Code. And street parking can, and off-site parking cannot be counted as required parking for the different uses. There are 222 parking spaces provided for the hotel use, and 222 spaces are required. So that includes one space per each hotel room and one per five employees. The use of the Meeting Room Building may require more parking in addition to that. And some of the conditions that we've proposed is to limit the hours, number of people, music, et cetera, to address some of these concerns with both parking and noise. So we'll go through those a little later on. So the intent of the use of the Meeting Room and outdoor event space was not initially clear, and so that was part of what the Commission had requested that the, that staff meet with the applicant to get a better idea of what that, what exactly type of events were proposed to be held in this, this space. And again, after meeting with the applicant, the intent did become more, more clear. And based upon my meeting and getting a better understanding of what those proposed uses are, even though the plans indicate it as a Meeting Room Building, the intent seems to be more consistent with an event center or event use on that site. The Village Specific Plan did not necessarily anticipate this level of use for these types of facilities. Again, the anticipated uses associated with a hotel were hotel support service uses, so things like a restaurant, gift shop, or, you know, waitroom, or something that services the hotel in that way. And staff has worked with the applicant to draft conditions to allow some degree of flexibility in relation to the use of this meeting and event room, or meeting space and events, outdoor event space. But, and I'll go through what those, those conditions are and the justifications behind that. So staff's recommendation, recommended conditions of approval, this is just a summary of sort of the overarching bullet points. So basically allowing the use of the Meeting Room and outdoor event space for events subject to the following conditions, which include conditions related to special events for hotel and non-hotel guests. So whether that's, you know, a wedding where some of the guests are staying at the hotel and some are not, those types of events. The next would be events held by the hotel for hotel guests only. So I don't know, throwing a, you know, lunch or something, just, or, you know, for the event, the hotel guests there. There's another category, which is special community-wide events hosted by the hotel. So if they were to have something that they were advertising to the community at large, what maybe, you know, this would be some, a larger event where it was advertised, you know, valley-wide or something like that, where both valley residents and hotel guests would both be attending. I've also included a condition related to exceptions to these standards, which is related to the process that an, the applicant would be required to go through if a particular event would exceed the standards that staff is recommending. Also, the next bullet point E, which is conditions related to outdoor music and minimizing noise impacts related to the use. And kind of along with that, the noise ordinance compliance, which all projects are required to comply with. And the last bullet point here, the Planning Commission review condition, which essentially, I'll go through it in detail, but allows the Commission to bring back the project if issues arise that need to be addressed. So I'll just go through each, each point and what the wording that I've proposed. And what I've tried to do is, if there's something different from what you see in your packet, it's been highlighted in that different color there on the screen. It's a little hard to see, but I'll try to point them out. So essentially what, what staff is proposing for special events for hotel guests slash non-hotel guest events, so where there's kind of a combination, is allowing them to occur from 8:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. So in your staff report, initially it said 11:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m., which, just for your information, is consistent with the condition that is imposed on the Hampton Inn project. So they are conditioned to have, these types of events need to be held for their conditions from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. However, in this case, recognizing that, you know, they might want to have morning meetings, different organizations, that that, the impact in the morning would not be as great as, say, extending hours in the evening, where more cars would be parked there, there'd be more noise impacts, you know, as the event gets out, if we were to allow later hours. So basically, the, and then in moving along with this condition, with a maximum of 100 non-hotel guests in attendance Sunday through Wednesday, and 75 non-hotel guests Thursday through Sunday. And I'll go into detail of how I arrived at that, at those numbers on the next slide. But I'll just, for purposes of this condition, just keep going. And I included this sentence, this next sentence here. In the event that there are two separate events occurring at one time, the total guests combined for both events shall not exceed the maximum. So you could have two separate events if you wanted to, but they couldn't exceed those numbers combined. And I did include this, the text in the different color, which is different than what you see in your staff report, which is basically to account for, again, basically the title of the condition, which is if it's not completely hotel guests or not completely hotel guests, or non-hotel guests, that accounts for, for what that means. So basically, you can, the condition addresses non-hotel guest maximums and just basically states, as you'll see in the next condition, or next few conditions, that if they're hotel guests, then there's really no, we're not proposing any maximum necessarily, just something that is compliant with fire and building code and occupancy. So this goes back to how I got to the numbers, the updated numbers. So I'll just flip back really quickly. So the 75 non-hotel guests, Sunday through Wednesday, and, I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, 100 non-hotel guests, Sunday through Wednesday, and 75 non-hotel guests, Thursday through Saturday. So this is basically, so the applicant had provided a little bit more of a detailed spreadsheet, but I tried to narrow it down. And just to give you a little background, this goes back to basically the requirement that we cannot count off-site parking for, you know, required or counted parking for these different types of uses, including this Meeting Room space. So with the applicant, based upon my conversations with the applicant, the applicant did provide a spreadsheet that shows several different assumptions, which show basically the average typical occupancy rates for the hotels on any given day of the week. And then I tried to, and then based upon their assumption, which, and I would like to point out, the, this updated spreadsheet has a different car per non-hotel guest assumption than the sheet in the staff report. So it's actually increased in the next version, which would actually reduce the number of, maximum number of non-hotel guests that staff would feel, be in support of, given the assumptions. So basically, to describe it a little bit more in detail, what I've done is I've taken the different number of non-hotel guests and broken down where you would have a surplus of parking available based upon the assumption, the occupancy assumptions, and where you might have, you know, a shortage of onsite parking specifically. So, and again, this is just showing onsite parking, because that's all that we would be concerned with for this purpose. So as you can see, you know, with 50 non-hotel, 50 non-hotel guests, you have basically a surplus of parking for any, any type of, any event, because there's only 33 parking spaces required based upon the one per 1.5 assumption that was provided by the applicant. As you move down here, 75 non-hotel guests, you can see that there's a surplus on the Sunday through Wednesday. So that's still fine. And you have a little bit of a shortage here on Friday and Saturday, but nothing that's really too significant in that regard. And then as you move down, you have 100 non-hotel guests, and you still have a surplus on a couple of, of the days, but you start getting into a shortage on, you know, Thursday through Saturday, essentially. So that's really, and if you keep moving down, then 150 non-hotel guests, you really are running into a shortage of onsite parking overall for any day of the week, and not even to mention 200 guests. So again, looking just at the availability of onsite parking based upon the assumptions provided by the applicant. So if you look at this spreadsheet, you can see the purpose of only allowing 75 non-hotel guests on, for events Thursday through Saturday, because you can see that there would be a shortage of parking, onsite parking on those days. So therefore, the maximum that staff is recommending, maximum non-hotel guest is 75 on Thursday through Saturday, and 100 on Sunday through Wednesday, because you can see there's no shortage there. That's kind of where the pinch point is, I guess you could say. So that's, that's where those numbers do come from, and I'll just move on to the...
I have a question here. Now, the top part, that was provided by the applicant.
That's correct.
And, you know, well, I'll ask him where he got his numbers. Another quick question. You said two separate events at one place, at the meeting room. If it's open...
Well, so if, what I, what I meant was if there's maybe an event in the meeting room or like some sort of meeting event going on in the meeting, the actual building, and then maybe there's another event going on in the outdoor event space.
Okay.
So that's, that's... Okay, so moving on to the next point here, there really wasn't much change in the, I just highlighted the 10:00 p.m. to give you an idea of what staff's proposing, but there really wasn't much change from what you see in your staff report on this one. And this is basically just saying, if you're having a hotel event for advertised and for hotel guests only, we really don't have, we really aren't proposing to restrict the number of attendees, because there would be no, you know, no parking impacts if they were all hotel event guests. So, but that, with that said... So, but that, with that said, unless otherwise restricted based upon building and/or fire maximum occupancies. But again, in any event, all outdoor, outdoor events shall end no later than 10:00 PM, even if they are hotel guests. That's really just to avoid any noise, noise impacts.
How do you police that?
Well, so I'll go on to another, one of these, actually a condition suggested by the applicant, which is they propose to, for certain events, or events that exceed certain number of people thresholds, to have sort of a chaperone or monitor for these, these events. So. And then the next category would be special community-wide events, so large events hosted by the hotel. Staff feels that in these instances, which is what we require of other projects, that all special events that are held by the hotel for the community at large, you know, big events, should require a separate, separate temporary use permit, which is the typical process for these types of events for other, other projects. And again, in no event shall these events end later than 10:00 PM. And this is sort of an overarching comment, I did include it here specifically, but the planning commission does have the option to limit the frequency of, of events that occur on the site, and that's just up to the commission to discuss if, if that's something, something that they would like to add. And this condition, again, talks about the exceptions to these standards, so if they, if the applicant would like to go above the number of people, you know, beyond the number of hour, or the hours that are listed in the conditions, that they would be required to submit and receive approval for a separate temporary use permit. So the outdoor music condition is very similar to what we've required on other projects. So, you know, that we are, we would allow outdoor music, subject to the following conditions, which include live outdoor music shall not include drums or bass, which is relatively consistent with the Flying Flags RV Resort condition that they have for live outdoor music events. Amplified music that does not exceed maximum decibel levels for the city's noise ordinance is, is okay. And no outdoor music shall be permitted after 9:00 PM in any case. So that's generally consistent with Flying Flags conditions that are placed on their live outdoor music. And just this one, just to be clear and provided in the conditions of approval, that all outdoor events shall strictly adhere to the requirements of the city's noise ordinance that we have in place. And this, this condition is what I was referring to earlier, which is the condition proposed by the applicant, which again, the planning commission has the option to add if they would like. Basically, that if, in any event that exceeds more than 50 people, they would have at least one chaperone and two for any event over 100. So that, again, it'd be responsible for assisting with the guests, entering, exiting, noise monitoring, parking, et cetera. So that would, that could possibly alleviate some of the concerns with noise for events that, you know, might get out a little late if they got a temporary use permit, or, you know, different things like that, just to alleviate some of those concerns. And planning commission review, so this has remained the same with the exception of what was added at the bottom there in that different color. So the city at any time really does have the authority to bring back the project if there are concerns related to the, the use of the meeting room and event space. So that wording kind of explains it there. However, the applicant did propose some additional wording, and so I sort of added that in and changed the wording around a little bit, just to make it a little bit more clear. And so that just basically explains that, you know, staff would work with the hotel ownership and management to cure any compliance or effectiveness issues of these conditions, I mean, in advance of bringing it back to the planning commission for possible modifications. So, and we would do, that's, that would be the typical process anyway, we would work with the applicant before we would bring it back to, for a formal modification. The, so the final EIR was previously prepared for the Oak Springs Village specific plan back in 2003. The addendum to the final environmental impact report was prepared for the project as, as related to traffic. And based upon that, and with the incorporation of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending, there, no further environmental review would be required. So the recommendation is that planning commission consider the approval of resolution numbers 1901 and 1902, as worded in the staff report, which again, would repeal and replace resolution number 1807, and approve the addendum to the Oak Springs Village specific plan, and also repeal and replace resolution number 1808 to approve the final development plan and tentative parcel map. And this is again, with the modification, modified conditions of approval to condition number 87, related to the meeting room building and outdoor event space. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions? I have one here. Now, the traffic study, did it take into account any of the additional non-hotel guests?
So the traffic study did, did not take in account the level of, of use that the applicant is proposing. However, staff, the conditions that staff has proposed, with the limitations that staff has proposed, staff would feel that, that that would be adequately addressed. However, if anything above and beyond that, would, it could, it could, it's possible that it would require some additional analysis.
Okay, it wouldn't take it down to what's the, it's at a level D right now?
That's correct. Or at least Highway, McMurray and Highway 246.
Is a D. And what's lower than a D? An E?
F.
F. Now, would it have the possibility with those, with 100 guests coming on the weekend to take it to an F? Do you know that?
Um, that's not, I, I don't know that for a fact.
I, I can chip in on that. The way we've developed the condition would still be within accessory uses of a hotel use, so would not exceed any of the traffic, so it's still within the parameters. But if it goes to a full event center, then we have not addressed those particular traffic impacts. So what we're proposing in the conditions is consistent with the traffic study and how the, the project would work.
When is it classified a full event center?
Pardon?
I said, when is it classified a full event center?
I mean, so that's, that's the purpose of, staff getting a better idea of what the exact intent of the meeting room building was. But that's, the conditions that we've, that staff has recommended would, in my opinion, be within, basically, would not make it be considered a full event center if you have these conditions and limitations imposed. But really, anything above that, because, you know, and I just would like to kind of go back to what was, were the original conditions that were proposed as part of the project, which, which is what I brought on December 20th, which was basically that the events that were held in this meeting room building were, should be limited to non-ho, I mean, to hotel guests only, and then anything else other than that would be temporary use permit. However, um, per this, per the planning commission's recommendation, I attempted to work with the applicant to develop some conditions that staff felt comfortable with, that would provide a little bit of flexibility to, for the applicant to hold some of these other types of events without impacting, without rising to the level of a full event center and still being consistent with basically the hotel support services uses which are allowed in the specific plan.
And what did we, seeing I can't take part in discussions, but what happens with Flying Flags? Now, they have an event center there, we're having state of the city there.
That's correct. They did, as part of their most recent final development plan, which was back in 2016, they did provide several additional parking spaces for that event building. However, they are also able to accommodate, any event that they've had there, they are able to accommodate on their site.
I beg to differ, because I live right next door to it. And on events, it fills up Shadow Mountain down to about, almost my house, I could probably sell my parking space. But I'd have to say they spill over quite often on their events, so I, I see it all the time.
Okay.
Just a little area of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And, any other questions?
Yeah, although you don't count the parking on Valley Vineyard Circle, how many vehicles will that circle accommodate?
So the applicant actually did provide some, some sort of ballpark idea of how many, and I think, I believe it was around 76 spaces.
Of which seven were occupied at 4:45 today. So it's used.
Mm-hmm.
On there. Other questions?
I have some questions for the applicant.
Okay, could we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Chris Atkinson, Pacific Property Partners.
If you want to go ahead and just raise the volume, yeah. So you'd have to...
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I'll put her away.
Okay. Present for the applicant.
So I don't know if this had come up in previous meetings, but this is kind of related more to the ownership and that kind of thing. So is there going to be like a formal agreement between parcels A and B for a joint sharing of that meeting room building?
Yeah, reciprocal use, yes.
And then would, this is kind of a technical question, but would that be recorded in title documents? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for maintenance purposes and everything, yeah.
So someone down the road sells it, and somebody else buys it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. That's really all I had.
Other?
Uh, question probably for the director, and this is Picky, the musician, but if they're following the decibel level, it really shouldn't matter what instrumentation they have. Like, I've got friends that are electric bass players, and they're currently, is it, acoustic bass players are okay? And I know that's Picky, but I'd rather have it...
We may as shame comment.
Well, so this had actually come up in, when we were conditioning the Flying Flags RV, live outdoor music, and there was other people, community members that had come that expressed their concern with, even if you're within the maximum decibel level, sometimes the vibrations of the...
The lower frequencies carry further.
Right, so, so that was the purpose behind putting that in there, and that's what we actually put in for Flying Flags, so.
So, so Mariachi man would be acceptable.
Uh, that's pretty loud. And, and to go on further with that, there's no specification for a DJ and his bass level, or an auctioneer. I mean, I mean, these are things that could come up.
Right.
So I think just a flatline decibel level, that, that should be more than enough. If you're worried about the lower frequencies, you place the decibel counter a certain number of feet or yards away from it to determine whether or not that's going to actually impact the surrounding townhouses.
I, I can chip in on that. The, the bass and the drums really are not conducive to monitoring with noise levels, with the noise meter level, as opposed to...
Well, they spike, yeah.
Yes, so you can't really do that. It's more of a nuisance issue as opposed to a decibel issue. So we have the decibels for the main music to keep below, but the drums and bass, you can ask some residents here in, in Rancho de Maria about that, when they're meeting decibel levels, it is still an issue with the bass and the drums. So that is the basis for the condition, and that's what we've done with Flying Flags as well. And Hampton doesn't really have that, because they're not out there. But we're trying to protect the residents, and those are things you can't really monitor and do a straight decibel level monitoring on.
So no gray, gray area there?
No.
Okay.
Any, anymore? Oh, no, I'm good with that. Marcella?
I don't know if I'm, I can ask this question, but I will anyway because of the recent blackout we've had in this last week, but will you guys have onsite generators?
I'm sure we'll have something of that sort, yes. We haven't gotten that far, though.
Okay. I noticed the Hampton still had lights and whatnot during the blackout.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd have to, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I've just got a question here, or a couple of them. Your occupancy, that you have listed for your weekdays and the weekend and stuff, where did you pull those figures?
Star reports. Star reports, standard market reports.
Okay, I, I just got up in, I love the web.
Yeah.
And I came up with actually an average of 75% rounded off, and you're at a 70, 72.
On average.
On, on average. And so you're, you're minus another six spaces already...
Okay.
...using those figures, and that's from CBRE, which I understand is an internationally recognized industry, hotel industry watchdog or consultant.
Sure.
You know, at the event, and you're figuring that you're going to have, what is it, oh, all four, 4,400 square foot building?
Mm-hmm.
Sort of be an open area right now? Is that sort of the plan?
Correct.
Okay, and, you know, besides all these people that they're drawing in, are you figuring that hotel staff will take care of it? Or are you going to have an outside catering event, or is that, you know...
It depends on the event.
Okay, so you could have outside catering, outside waiters, I mean, if you're doing a full-blown dinner and everything, you're going to have to have quite a few waiters, again, each of those taking up parking.
It would be unusual that we'd bring in outside catering, because it's going to be set up that, the way that we have the buildings laid out, if you notice, there's, the Boutique Hotel had a kitchen entrance that is right adjacent to...
I can point out, this would be where the kitchen is for the Boutique Hotel with the restaurant to this side, so the access right into the, to the meeting room or the event center would be right there. We have a prep kitchen staging area in there.
Okay. And then one point you mentioned that one of the ways you'd alleviate the parking would be to have off-site parking available, and I suppose some type of shuttle service or something like that.
Correct.
Where is this off-site parking? Have you...
We'd have to determine that.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, so have you even gone around the city to see?
Uh, no, not at this point.
I just say I, I can't think of an off-site parking spot readily available.
Well, Mr. Baker owns two acres right down the street that we'd gladly rent from him.
Okay, good, good to hear.
What is the capacity for that?
It's about two acres.
No, I mean, how, how many cars would that be?
I have no idea, we'd have to lay it out.
That's quite a few cars, though.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it for myself on the questions. Anybody else do we bring up?
Uh, I don't have a question. I, I just hope that, to encourage him to, maybe you could get your own shuttle bus or something, to, to encourage people coming in advance to, to shuttle to the hotel, use it around town, you know, just between Buellton and Solvang. Also, employees, maybe, maybe work out a deal with the Chumash, they have a bus going to Lampoke, I think, every hour, instead of using, because I still don't believe that five employees are going to use one spot. So anything you can do to reduce the parking from now.
Sure. Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Open to public hearing, and in no particular order. Bobby Manelli? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Bobby Manelli, P.O. Box 565, Buellton. I was a longtime resident of the city. I was very glad to see the poles and the flags go up there, to see what we're going to be looking at. And honestly, I was quite appalled at what I seen. It takes away a lot of the mountain range and the backspace. At the stop sign at Second Street in Central, you can't even see the mountains. The, the actual buildings tower over the top of the mountain range, Figaro, Santa Barbara Mountains. And I asked friends and neighbors regarding the new hotel site and the hotels, and every single one of them are brown, just like I am. Nobody likes them there. It's a poor location, they're way too big, and I did some digging. I don't see where City Council had anything, any say in the approval of these hotels, and I don't know why. And I'd like to get the council involved with this, and the citizens of Buellton to look at what they're facing. Now, if you're not in this town, there's a awesome two quarries at DeMasa and McMurray Road, across from the Hampton. Perfect location, okay? You're talking about a lot of extra traffic in this town, which is already backed up like fucking crazy. It's mobbing, getting through town anymore. Now you want to add, why not, right in McMurray Road? It's horrible. The Masas, at least people can get right out the freeway, get in, get right back on the freeway. You got Thunderdome housing truck right behind it. Three hundred and sixty days out of the year, the wind is blowing east from Lampoke. In and out from those hotels, you're going to Thunderdome and the Olive Vineyard Village houses. You're going to have hundreds of more cars going in and out every day. People are, people on their phones. Now, you have to talk about Southky, kids and people living in that area, now you're going to have to deal with ten plus more traffic from people coming in all those hotels right there in the middle of McMurray Road. So, there will be a petition that I'm going to put forward to the council, if the council is not involved in this deal. And there's nobody, not one single person I've talked to in this town that... in this town that likes these hotels going there. They're not a map, they're not a location for them. And it's just, it's a safety hazard, it's a nuisance for traffic. And it's sad. And I talked about, you know, having generators for power outages. Can you imagine the noise to Thunderdome and the people in the Vineyard housing? That ain't going to happen. I mean, we got the, we got the mail out of town, but the hotel sucks out. I mean, we got six huge hotels in this town. Channel four, they're on our phone, ever. Nothing I can add here. All of them are faking. You can find out anyone at any given time. So I don't even think there needs to be another hotel. And I don't know how this all got approved under the mazons of other citizens in this town and the council, but I think it needs to come to a discretion hall so everybody can get involved and see what, what way is going to be impacted in the city. The city's getting too big. I've been here too long, a lot of people have. A lot of people are loving because it's getting too big. With these streets, three-story buildings, getting traffic like crazy. It's unbearable. And you might put a stop to something somewhere. But it's a graph concern of mine. And it's going to not be met head-on. And I would like to see the city council involved with it. And I'm aware they haven't been, but they need to be residents of this town, I lived here for so long, and me as well. There's a lot of concerns here. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you'd like me to address it. The City Council has been involved in this project since the beginning. They're the ones who authorized and approved the specific plan for a hotel of this scale on this particular site. So they approved the specific plan, and now they're coming through with plans, and the Planning Commission is the authority for approving the plans consistent with the City Council-approved specific plan.
Okay, I have Nick Angel.
I think he said it all.
Could you please state your name?
Nick Angel, Bear Creek Drive, Buellton. That man took away my thunder. I heard someone say, oh, this is a great project. This could bring lots of money to town. No, it's not. This is the argument that's been used for seventy-five years in Orange County, L.A. County. Anybody want to live there? It's always just one more little project, just one more project. Someone submits the plan knowing darn well. He submits it huge, and it'll be cut down a little and still be just what he wanted. What good does this do the citizens of Buellton? We didn't ask for more hotels. Then they leave the hotel and go over to San Diez, Solvang, and wine tasting and beer drinking. It's, it's like it's not Buellton anymore. Just all the little minutia we've been listening to, that's all part of the trade of getting the okay that the builder wants. And knows that he'll have to go through this back-and-forth nonsense. That's about it. I can't imagine anybody would think this is a great idea. Four stories. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sandy Lincoln?
Hi, good evening. I'm Sandy Lincoln. I am at 227 Demme Way. I am a homeowner in the Vineyard Village townhomes. I bought our, we bought our townhome with the knowledge that this hotel was possibly coming. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the hotel idea. Okay, I was fully understanding of the idea. But I am extremely concerned about the parking and the traffic that is going to, that's going to happen with an event space this large, with hotels this large. We, I am part of the parking committee in the Vineyard Village. We are taking parking very seriously within our boundaries there. I've talked with Andrea about a few things. So we're very concerned that spillover will come into the village. We already have only seventy-four spaces available to a hundred and fifty units, okay? So we already have people who have three and four cars per family and garages for only space for two. We do know that there are families who are not using their garage, which is part of our charter, to make sure that they are using the space that they purchased first before going to the spaces outside in the common area. We've seen horrendous traffic going on McMurray in terms of speed, the amount of cars that are coming in and out of there since moving in. I lived in Marriott Hotel for five months waiting for my townhome to be finished. And I watched traffic for months and months and months. And it is steadily and steadily growing at a very rapid rate. And the village is not even complete yet, okay? So it's, it's a very high concern of mine. I'm wondering, I have a question here. Is there a light planned at Vineyard Valley Circle, Valley Vineyard Circle and McMurray?
Not at this time, no.
Neither location?
No.
Okay.
Okay, there has to be something there. Someone is going to get hurt. Someone, we've, we've talked to Holly and the council about the traffic and the large trucks parking on McMurray and blocking our exits and that, you know, this, that, and the other. And they've, right now, they've got some stanchions or something blocking the spaces that are right by our entrance. It's great, and I hope those remain or that becomes red or something, and there's going to be no parking there. But as this hotel comes in, I mean, you're talking about almost the size of that condo unit development adding a hotel of up-to-plan guests of a hundred and seven per hotel? That means there's an additional at least a hundred and seven cars, you know, every day, or possibly, you know, their family comes to visit, you know? We all know that only, it isn't one car when you have an event at a hotel, okay? If they allow an event to happen there, like a wedding, you're talking about a hundred and thirty-five people invited to a wedding. You know, they all have to come in by a car. I just, I just don't feel that the parking issue has been addressed well enough to support this large of a project. I intent, I, the intent of the hotel, I thought that was going to be a meeting room. I had no idea that that was going to be a planned event space. I'm planning a wedding in July, and I had to move out of Buellton to find a space to have this wedding. And I know what it's going to be like to have cars and people, you know, for a very small wedding that I'm planning. And to have an event like that, I hear music from Flying Flags. So this decibel business, okay? And the townhomes, I hear their music. And I am on Mr. Baker's, I believe, I am on Mr. Baker's side. Okay, so I'm up against the mountain. It's beautiful. And I hear it there, okay? So sometimes I even hear Figaro Mountain Brew, the band there, okay? So I can drive around and I can hear the music, you know, and I hear it thumping at my house, and then I go to Figaro. Who's playing music? You know, who do I want to go and stop and listen to, you know? So very concerning about this being an event space and not just a hotel. Thank you.
Couple of questions I have.
Yes.
Okay, so each of the places or units has two parking covered or in garage, and then there's exterior parking, correct?
There are seventy-four spaces.
Now, are they patrolled or anything?
Well.
Are they signed?
We're working on the charter right now. The parking committee is three people. And then we report to the HOA board, okay? We are proposing some guest spaces because we do know that, you know, the homeowners have guests. They need a place to park. We are proposing of the seventy-four to make twenty-two, which is thirty percent, guest spaces. That's a, that's a number we drew out of a hat, you know, to start at. It's, it's going to be a huge struggle to get those people in their garage. Because I happen to know right now, there are people living there who are running businesses out of their garage. Okay, so I know it's happening. So it's, yeah, we have someone who's sitting in the garage. But, you know, every little town has their, you know, their issues. And so we will have ours, but it will be our charter to monitor the traffic and the parking. There will be guest signs, there will be ADA signs. I was speaking with Andrew when we first came in to make sure that the HOA didn't have to pay for the ADA signs. And that was part of the development, you know, that they had to do that, so. But I'm sure we're going to have to pay for the guest signage. And, you know, so, yes.
And another question, so you do have, I mean, people are going to have guests. And so now, when those seventy-four or whatever number of parkings, so they park on Valley Vineyard Circle?
Absolutely.
Okay, so those spots where everybody's counting on, you have two competing organizations.
Absolutely.
And how much more of a build-out do you know about, for your development? How many more apartments, townhouses, or what?
I believe we have just finished phase eight? Phase eight of twelve? Phase eight of twelve. So I know personally that there are two more buildings planned, one more on, like, there's two more planned for McMurray that, close to the Marriott, between my condo and the Marriott. I know there are two large buildings planned for that location. And I believe, three more?
Is there ninety of the hundred and fifty spaces filled? So there should be sixty more.
Okay.
On top of seventy-four.
No, that's units, right?
Units.
And they'll have some parking associated with them besides, besides that. You're about two-thirds done. And parking is bad now.
Oh, it's awful.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the seventy-four spaces, those are all supposed to be guest spaces per municipal code of the city.
Is that right?
Yes.
Right. Interesting, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. I will use that information as best I can. You said something, and it made me think of something else. Shoot. That old brain. Oh, shoot, it was good.
Okay. If you think of it, let us know. That's the last slip I have. If somebody else would like to come up and talk and just fill out a slip afterwards, please, gentlemen.
Other question. Submit a paper for the.
Yeah.
Other question.
State your name.
Having heard all, oh, yeah, I'm Dr. Mathias. M-A-T-H-I-A-S. Eckhart, you said K-A-R-T last name, first name, sorry. Well, having heard all this discussion now, I'm starting to wonder whether a lot of these problems can be solved by not having that meeting room. Does a development really need a meeting room? Because every hotel, large hotel, when they have conferences for businesses that want to have, you know, some conferences off-site of their own company, you know, they usually fit right there in a regular hotel. Why, why having the meeting room, so-called meeting room? Really, it doesn't look like a meeting room to me. It just looks to me like a sound box. Just going to be noisy, and I noticed that our discussion here has been almost entirely based on that building, which is not even a pretty building. The comment I wanted to actually make to start with is that can that barn be turned into a building that at least is a little bit more consistent with the appearance of the rest of the buildings? That barn doesn't look good. In twenty years, it will look even worse. So I think perhaps, I don't know if it's financially beneficial enough for the developer, but I think getting rid of the meeting room may solve a lot of problems, including parking.
And at the end of it, if you could fill out one of these forms.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Sure.
I live in Vineyard Village, so.
Could you state your name?
I put my roar in the water.
Could you state your name?
Oh, James Perry. I don't, there's not a, if any, resistance to the hotel within all of the people I know in the condo. There's a hundred and fifty-five units. I think probably a hundred of them are finished and nobody, as you can see, there were three of us showed up, so nobody's too concerned about it. I think one thing is that Buellton kind of needs to look at what it's going to be. I don't think it's going to be a sleepy little town forever. There's too much going on around it. And I noticed that Hampton is, looks like it's full or close to full every night. So anyhow, I just don't, I understand there's problems and there's parking and all that, but I think most of those can be developed, dealt with effectively. And I just want to say that I'm in favor of the project. I think it'd be a great source of income for the city. And frankly, I think it'll increase the property values in Vineyard Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, can't, couldn't think of it, could you?
Yes.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Who would like to start?
Well, you have a lot of notes, Mike.
Yeah, because I can't remember anything either.
Well, I think the issues that have been, I think the biggest one we have is, or two of them are traffic, well, three of them, traffic, parking, and noise. So maybe you could talk on each one of those. And if we need be, we can go through each of the conditions on from eighty-seven. So first, if you just go into a general comment, or maybe, maybe just go through, well, no, let's just do general comments.
Okay, well, I, I am in favor of it with the staff recommendations of eight AM through seven PM meetings, seventy-five and fifty, I think is what we came up with. Was it seventy-five and a hundred? Seventy-five and a hundred. I am still very constrained about parking, but I think we've adequately planned for that in Condition H, I think is Planning Commission review for later, if we have to. If the applicant wants to continue with this project, then you never know what happens in the future. I don't know. But we can't let it impact the neighborhood, so.
How, how close is the two acres?
Very close. One, just one parcel away.
Okay.
Isn't that correct, Joe?
And is that just grass or?
Joel? Or just pastures? But it could be developed.
It's for sale.
Hey!
Two acres.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Anything else, Bob?
No, I'm, I think I covered it.
Okay. Marcella?
The project is sound, it stays within the limits of all our ruling and zoning and height and whatnot. And traffic's going to be a problem, and we'll have to work on it.
When, when did the council come to agreement on, on the height?
It was when the specific plan was modified. I think there was.
Two thousand seven.
Seven, but then there was a modification after that as well. That was later. But this plan has been in place since two thousand and three, and it's been amended several times by the council to get to the plan that was in the specific plan that this project is consistent with.
Okay, well, just a couple of things that I heard that people really were pacifist about was, was the height. And I mean, is, is this going to be a larger, long-term plan[1762.12] And, I mean, is, is this going to be a larger, long-term plan in terms of height for development down there?
So the hotel component of the specific plan is the only component of the specific plan or anywhere else in the city that, that would allow this height.
Okay.
So it's not proposed for any other area.
So what's the limit?
The limit for the hotel site?
No, 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 the hotel site I know, but like after that.
Our standard.
Oh, our standard?
Yeah.
So for the sea, commerce, general commercial zone, it's typically thirty-five feet maximum.
Okay.
Um, industrial's a little bit higher, um, but typically for commercial zoned properties, it's thirty-five feet maximum.
And, and the Avenue of Flags specific plan is forty-five, I believe.
Okay.
And that's consistent with, with the Marriott and some of the other...
So that should allay some of the concerns.
Anything?
Hi. Everybody put mind.
Okay.
So, um, well, I want to commend Andrea and staff for putting together the presentation tonight because she answered all my questions. Um, and I think, um, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Blockdike to, um, to go with the parameters outlined in these conditions, the time, the eight AM to seven PM, the hundred seventy-five, um, and everything else that we've gone through. I would not be opposed to doing a limit on the frequency of events if we wanted to, you know, maybe that's how we kind of curb it in the beginning. Um, you know, number of events per month or something like that.
Who, who, who's responsible for reviewing that? Is that us every time?
No, no.
No, it would be a condition of approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Going to be reviewed by, if, if they exceeded it?
Yeah, I mean, generally, we would probably know when events were occurring, so, you know, we could monitor it just based upon being in the area and making sure.
Unless I'm the only one who thinks we should do that.
Uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of limiting the events.
Oh, okay.
Not now.
Okay.
But if it comes back to us later, that could be something we could add in. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
That's really all I have.
Okay. I have some issues. I, I, I mean, parking and traffic, I think are going to be a lot more affected by this than I think we, we realize. So the traffic study took into account, is it a hundred and how many units?
Um, it's a total of two hundred and fourteen, a hundred and seven each.
No, no, in, uh, the, the condos and...
A hundred and fifty-five.
And that along with this project is all figured into McMurray and two forty-six. All those numbers have been plugged in and, and R D.
That's correct.
And then we throw in another hundred and something visits on a weekend, and I just, I want to make, I just, I agree that traffic is horrible if you get out there at five. And, you know, some people don't have any option to do it.
The specific plan, how many hotel units did the specific plan permit?
The specific plan permitted two hundred and, up to two hundred and twenty-five hotel units.
So again, as, as most things on this project, they're right at the limit.
Um, yes.
Or, or really close to it.
Mm-hmm.
On there. Uh, I just, boy, I'll tell you, I think the gentleman was correct that a lot of this, if that meeting room was not there, uh, goes away. But I can envision, and I, I know that, you know, there was a comment made that, uh, there's never full occupancy. Well, I, I live next door to an RV park and, uh, next door to Sideways Inn, and I can tell you times during the summer, they're both a hundred percent booked.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, and I know that, uh, when Hampton Inn opened up, I think they were at ninety, ninety-four percent, and Marriott was at ninety, ninety-three. So, you know, so they've obviously done their numbers, but also their numbers, I think, are, I don't think they're, come a summer month here, you know, when, when, when their occupancy is not the eighty percent on the weekend, but ninety-four, which is what they're hoping for. You know, they want that ninety percent. I think parking will be a real issue on there. And I, you know, I always like to try to reach a consensus here, but I'm really not in favor of it as the parking stands now, but I'm just one person in, in the traffic.
Do we know what, what the negative financial impact would be of not having that meeting space for you guys? Please.
Yeah, it was intentional. I mean, it, it, the, the, the volume of, of guests that come in on a Sunday through Wednesday is directly proportional to the meeting space area that we have. So it's, has a significant impact on the economics of the hotel.
As big of an impact as reducing some of the rooms? The number of rooms?
Why would we reduce rooms?
I'm, I'm just saying, if, you know, if you, if there was one, if you had to give up one thing, you know, you, you alleviate, there's a couple ways you alleviate the parking. One is maybe you don't have the meeting room, or the other one is maybe you don't have two hundred and fourteen rooms.
Well, we're, we're entitled to have up to two hundred and twenty-five rooms.
I recognize that.
Yeah.
I, I recognize that. But I'm saying that, you know, push comes to shove, and we're, you know, I don't think we will, but if it comes down to it and they go, hey, you got to either do this and you need to come up with only needing two hundred spaces, therefore, you know, if there's a whole bunch of extra ones so that there's no issue with the meeting room. Is there a financial vibe or is that just a logic?
Yeah. And, and, I mean, each building is approximately, you know, plus or minus seventy thousand square feet. If we, if we dedicate half of the meeting area that we've got in that one space to each of them, we're talking about twenty-two hundred square feet for a seventy thousand square foot building. It's fairly nominal what we're talking about. I mean, the Marriott across the street has a hundred and forty-nine guest rooms. It has fourteen thousand square feet of meeting area. Two are four thousand. So, and it's also got a hundred and eighty-six parking stalls. We've got two hundred and twenty-two. And they don't have any parking on McMurray.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
I agree with Bob on, on not limiting the number of events at this time.
Oh, whoa. You can go back later.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Thing of getting old.
Hey, Mike, could you pass me the water?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Should have taken it first.
Okay.
Thank you. That's good. So do I hear a consensus there of not limiting the num, the frequency of events? Are we pretty much on that?
Yes.
And are we okay with how the conditions of eighty-seven are written with seventy-five and a hundred being for weekdays versus weekends?
Yes.
We all pretty good on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Are we good on the noise level?
Yes.
You know, following that?
At this point.
Okay. And I think that's the main parts of eighty-seven. Any other thing that we need to?
Uh, just one last thing. What's the likelihood of acquiring those two acres for usage? If needed, so?
Well, we, we can't really condition the project on that two acres because it's, it's not germane to the project. If, they would have to negotiate and whatever site they could negotiate with may or may not be that particular site.
Then, then why was it brought up?
I, staff didn't bring it up.
No, I, I know, just if it, if it's going to be a factor in the conversation, but it's not going to be a factor in reality, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I didn't say it wouldn't be a factor in reality, but you can't condition this project on a particular project site. That's standard planning type of conditioning. You know, do you don't have any nexus for that? So you can't tie that on to that particular project because they're also not part of this particular project as we've noticed it as well.
If, if the conditions get so bad that it's impacting the neighborhoods, then it can come back to the commission and we can then decide to, uh, make them...
Make a recommendation.
Right. Uh, you know, move people off, use them, uh, valet service or whatever to another site. So then they have to come up with a site. So that'll be, that's the kind of thing we can do.
Is it us or that, being the council at that point?
True. Okay. Any other comments? No.
We'll need two, two separate motions.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Uh...
You all need a reading?
Yes. I have to find the page.
Um, and I actually just wanted to, um, ask this one question. I did include it in my PowerPoint and regarding the event chaperone, is that something that the commission, that wasn't something that was, um, brought up specifically? So I just wanted to bring that up to see if that's something that they would, that you guys would like to, to see as well.
I would like to see it. Wasn't it, um, first brought up by the applicant?
Um, it was something that, it was a condition proposed by the applicant. Mm-hmm. As part of their red line version.
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too.
I didn't catch that.
The, um, the condition for an event chaperone or someone to manage the events that's part of the hotel to, um, ensure that people are, um, that the events managed well and, and to further minimize impacts that, that might occur.
Okay. Direct traffic.
Yeah.
People okay with that one? The chaperone? I'm okay with it. I don't think it's necessary, but I'm, but I'm okay with putting it in. But they want to propose it. Okay. Do I hear a resolution? We have to do the first one, which is what, nineteen oh one? Page two.
It's on the back. Page two.
My thing is all mixed, but...
Go ahead. You want to do it? Uh, move resolution number nineteen dash oh one, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Buellton, California, repealing and replacing planning commission resolution number eighteen oh seven, and approving an addendum to the Oak Springs Village specific plan, final environmental impact report for the development of the Cambria Hotel and Boutique Hotel project located on assessor's parcel number one three seven seven nine zero 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 one, and making findings in support thereof.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
A roll call?
Commissioner Eglon?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hamel?
Aye.
Chair Heady?
Um, well, I'm going to be consistent. I'm going to say not, no. Because I'm going to say no to the next one. So do I have a resolution for the next one?
So I can move to approve resolution number nineteen oh two, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Buellton, California, repealing and replacing planning commission resolution number eighteen dash zero eight, and approving a final development plan eighteen dash FDP dash zero two, and tentative parcel map TPM three one zero six two for the Cambria Hotel and Boutique Hotel project located between McMurray Road and Valley Vineyard Circle, assessor's parcel number one three seven seven nine zero 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 one, and making findings in support thereof.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hamel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike?
Aye.
Commissioner Eglon?
Aye.
Chair Heady?
Uh, no. So, so we're on to the next item. If I can find my page. Is other business? Uh, we have any written communication?
Nope.
Any planning commission comments? Uh, planning director report?
Um, just a, just a couple, um, things. The, you might have noticed the runaway art has been removed from the median along the avenue.
I didn't, though. Thank God.
So go by and check it out if you haven't.
Yeah. Which, did they take it to Fox and Relantho?
But do you know?
It's supposed to go to the train station in Santa Barbara.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully not on grass.
After a cleanup.
No, eventually it will be at the train station, but they currently took it to the